Mute your phone by pressing star six. After you provide comment, please mute your microphone or phone. Okay, did everyone have a chance to read the minutes? And do we have any corrections or motion?
I'd like to actually offer an amendment to the minutes. The section on page two, Commissioner Chatters added to the box. That section, if it could be moved to number seven, because that was actually in reference to that discussion rather than the previous discussion. That would be correct.
Thank you, I'll pick that up.
Thank you.
With that amendment, I would move approval.
I second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Atkins.
Commissioner Atkins?
Oh, we're voting.
Oh, we're voting? Oh, aye.
Commissioner Chatters?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Vice Chair Levr.
Yes.
At this point, do we have any reports from the commissioners? I guess start with Commissioner Atkins if you have any.
Yeah, I'll, I guess the only report I have is that I'll be starting a new job as the Legislative Policy Analyst at the Talalip Tribes. And that's all I have for my report.
Any other comment or any other reports? Okay, thank you. Then it's time for staff comments.
Great, good evening, Commissioners, I'm York Stevens-Watch, Planning Director for the city. Glad to be back in the council chambers, back for some of you, first time for a couple of our planning commissioners and actually a first time for me too. So I'm thrilled to have us all in the same space again and be able to welcome members of the public to come watch the proceedings here and offer their comments. And we'll be doing the same online as well for those of you that are watching from home. Be able to give your public comments from home as well and anticipate carrying this method forward for the future. So I'll just do a few quick comments this morning. We have taken a bit of a break for a couple of months on the, since our scoping period on the comprehensive plan update. We're doing a little bit of recalibrating of our work program for a good reason. So the legislature appropriated some pretty significant funds to support planning throughout the state. And that has led to some new resources that will be able to apply to the comprehensive plan periodic update. So we are working through how we might supplement our work program and the resources that we had assumed just a couple of months ago, looking at the potential for consultant support for aspects of it, maybe around engagement or some of the technical aspects of the environmental review process. We're also working through a couple of grant applications and grant awards through the Department of Commerce. We're, I think this week, maybe even today, working on signing contracts with a consultant group on the Housing Action Plan Implementation Grant Work Program. We've mentioned this a couple of times in planning commission meetings. This is targeted towards our housing development incentives and I guess right sizing those incentives to make sure that we're getting the best value for the incentive dollar outlay on that. So looking at things like our multifamily tax exemption program, our density bonuses, our fee waivers and other such offerings that we have for housing production in general and affordable housing and special needs housing specifically. That work program will take us through the end of 2022 and will have as a product a couple of reports and draft ordinances that we will bring progress updates to the planning commission and then ultimately the draft legislation before it goes to the city council in winter 2223. So that's one exciting piece of work that's halfway through. There's also a grant for middle housing that the legislature appropriated and that Commerce is administering. We submitted a letter of intent to apply to the Department of Commerce last week and are putting the final touches on our application for that grant. And that project will fold into the comprehensive plan update work program because the grant period is for the next year and that's not going to get us all the way to adoption of the ordinance that updates the comprehensive plan and then the development regulation changes and all of that. But we can have some interim products that will inform the middle housing. And middle housing is everything that's not a detached house or a larger apartment building. So everything in the middle between those two townhouses duplexes, up to courtyard apartments and stacked flats and sixplexes and all that. So the grant requires that we do work towards offering those middle housing choices in a minimum of 30% of the lots currently designated single family within the city. So we think we have some areas that are appropriate for that middle housing. It's implementing one of the actions that's in our housing action plan as well as policies in our comprehensive plan and some things that were already in our work program for the comprehensive plan update. And we talked about that in scoping, there's some elements in the dispersed alternative that we'll be studying in the environmental impact statement process. So this middle housing grant can help us with some of those interim products. Again, it's not going to take us all the way to adoption of an ordinance because it wouldn't make sense to kind of split our comp plan update. It makes sense to keep it all together, but we can have a gap analysis that will look at policies in the comprehensive plan and regulations in our code that might be an obstacle to middle housing in areas of the city. We'll hope to use some of the grant money to conduct outreach specifically around that question of middle housing opportunities. We're going to take a focus on racial equity and displacement implications associated with middle housing and then draft some comprehensive plan and development regulation amendments associated with that. So we'll be bringing authorization to apply for this middle housing grant to the council a week from tomorrow, I think it's the 29th or so. And send that off to Commerce and we've had some initial discussions with Commerce and we think we have a pretty good chance of getting that grant. So when you combine that with the formula grant for the periodic update we're getting, it's a pretty welcome and pretty substantial amount of resources that we hope to do a mix of if we can hire a good planner to support the periodic update and expand our capacity. We would love to do that with part of the resources and then consultant support for the rest of it. And again, looking for probably outreach and engagement. We'll talk about that in the later agenda item today in centering and advancing equity in our work, the importance of engaging with all of our communities throughout the city. And I think we can focus the grant application on the middle housing aspects and then the periodic update on the whole update, but they all really are intertwined and going to be part of an overall work program. So we're excited about the resources, it'll take some time to kind of recalibrate that work program. We also put a lot of effort into the couple of discussion items at the end of our agenda today that we've been talking about for several months around homeless shelters and emergency housing and the maximum number of residents in a dwelling unit. So we hope to bring that discussion near a close this evening and maybe we'll have a public hearing and get to a commission recommendation on that next month and then be free to pick up a little bit more of the comprehensive plan work program. And we have not forgotten about accessory dwelling units either. We had a great discussion about that with you all a couple of months ago and didn't want to keep two projects running simultaneously. So we've kind of put that on the back burner while we get this piece of work, which is time limited on it, finished and we'll pick both of those things back up later this summer. Other than that, great to be here, great to see everybody. And I'm happy to take any questions on anything that I just covered or anything else in that offer that extends to future meetings too. So if you ever have something on your mind that you're wondering what's going on at the planning department, feel free, you could let me know ahead of time and I'll work on some comments about that or we can answer them in the meeting itself. So unless there's any questions, we can carry on, thank you.
Go ahead.
About the middle housing grant, you said it would go into, be for next year?
The grant period, so the legislature appropriated it for the 2022 fiscal year, which I think is July 1, I was getting my Junes and Julies, but July 1 through June 30 of 2023. And so all of the activities associated with that grant have to be conducted during that timeframe and charged. So if it's a consultant contract, you'd have to bill the consultants or whatever the expenditures are.
Seems like a pretty tight, quick turnaround on that. You said that that wouldn't be enough time to actually get an ordinance or something. What would be a more realistic timeline for, assuming that grant comes through, that time before an ordinance could maybe be presented or adopted?
I think if we weren't in the middle of a periodic update, that could be a reasonable amount of time if we were working pretty full time on it. But I think given the context that we're in where we're working on a multi-year project to completely look at our comprehensive plan and development regulations and extend the planning period and accommodate this large increment of growth. So we're looking for capacity as part of this comp plan update already. We need to find an additional 10,000 housing units roughly of capacity somewhere. And so this fits in very well with that. And so I think that's the main reason that we wouldn't be getting to completion in that one year period. It would be a heavy lift anyways. But the more that we can look at things holistically with the entire comp plan update, the better job we'll do really knowing the impacts and interdependencies or interrelations between the different aspects of it.
Any other commissioner questions? Go ahead, Devin.
Thank you. So with regard to the various different analyses and that are going to take place, are any of them going to analyze what waivers builders or developers are requesting to determine if there are any trends there that indicate any particular barriers to potential solutions?
Yeah, so with regard to the middle housing, I think that's exactly the kind of thing we do in certain zones, allow duplexes for instance, but only if you have the right size and shape of lot. And so we'll look at, you know, where those barriers in the regulations exist to middle housing in the zones that do allow it now. And then of course, if it's just not allowed in the use table, that's pretty easy to identify. But we do hear frequently from, there's a couple of different kinds of barriers. There's things that we can modify in the regulations. So if there's an application, I think one frequent example that we hear is the third floor step back where floors three and above need to come in five feet on the interior sides. Townhouses are frequently three stories and you don't usually see the outside units come in by five feet. So we almost always get a request to modify that. And per the criteria, we're almost always able to grant that modification. And in that case, it would probably make sense to just change the code rather than constantly be allowing those modifications. But there's some others that we cannot modify and so we just have to tell, you know, height limits are some and some others and we just have to tell them, sorry, you're going to have to redesign the project. So that is probably one of the core things that we will be looking at for all of this.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? Do we have anybody on, so we have no one from the public. I guess I don't need to ask for comments. So the next item is the Transportation Improvement Program.
Okay, Richard Terry here with Public Works to brief the commission. And I believe we're aiming for a recommendation via resolution today, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So I'm Richard Terry, I'm the Engineering Services Manager for Public Works and I'll be presenting this six-year transportation improvement program. It is required by the state that we have a six-year transportation improvement program. It is a financially unconstrained list. It's approximately $5 billion worth of stuff if you were to total up everything, including, and probably with inflation, it's an even bigger number than that now. Those numbers have not been updated for this year's process. They are approximation. They're done when each of the projects was initially designed or initially thought of because some of them haven't been designed to any level beyond maybe four, what was called four or five percent design. So because they were thought of in a planning process somewhere in the past for the city. And so they are out of comprehensive plans in the past. They are out of transportation elements from the past and other planning efforts, either from the state or from the port or from sound transit. And they are reflected in the planning of others as a process that the city uses to say, these are all the things that are going on around us, these are the things that are important, these are all the things that we could be looking at in the next six years to work on in some way. And so all of the different phases that could be worked on, whether that's design, right away acquisition, construction, and for transit, because transit is in this also, could be equipment purchases and some of the different ways that transit interacts with grant funds through the Federal Transit Administration. So you'll see all of that there as you go through the list. So if you look at the page where you see a list with all the numbers and columns, just as a way to remind everyone who looks at this, those numbers are not there as priority order. There's columns and each of the columns are sort of subcategories of major arterials, minor arterials, non-motorized. That's just a placeholder, that's so that we can identify and talk about those things and say, item number one under this list. It doesn't say that's the top priority, it's just number one. And then we can go to the next page and say, item number one. And if it has a map, it has a map number and we can go find the map. And that's really all that those numbers mean. And so the real meat behind this is that this authorizes staff, myself and people in transit, to go forth and seek grant funds. So main part of my job is to go look for money to do transportation projects. So I keep a running six-year average of how much we spend in construction, completed projects as we move through this process. And we do about $10 million worth of construction projects that are transportation related. And that could be everything from mostly what we've been doing recently have been bicycle and pedestrian corridors, bicycle and pedestrian bridges, like Grand Avenue Park Pedestrian Bridge, some of those other kinds of projects. And so, and those could be including our overlay program and projects. And so that's kind of the area that we work on from the public work side as we look at this list. But we also look and work at the much bigger projects. And so it could be any and all things as we move through this process, just as a way. So we use this big, much bigger list to work on all these areas. And then we interface with the Puget Sound Regional Council, which is our regional transportation planning organization. And so that's how we move all of these things into the state's transportation improvement program. So all of these things fit together in how we go forth and seek funding and put together all the monies we need to pull off major projects. So when we do a big project, we start with little pieces and work our way towards the big pieces. So right now, for instance, you'll see projects on there that are huge projects. They're the US2 trestle. And we have a little piece of that going right now. We're doing a planning study to start working on one end of the trestle. And that's a couple million dollars. And that's going to be billions with a B and possibly if we wait longer, it'll be trillions with a T when somebody gets to do something with the trestle. And given that it'll be way out in the future, that probably won't be me talking about it. But that's the nature of this document as we work through this. So every year when I come, I talk about the new projects and they're in bold. So if they're new to this list, this six-year rolling list, I highlight them. And so then three new Public Works projects or projects that are not transit are the Marshland Bridge Replacement, which is a bridge that we've applied for, bridge funds with the state to replace out on, it's marshland. So, but it's out on the Snohomish Lowell River Road. And it's a, it's a bridge that's over flood control and irrigation control and it needs to be replaced. And so it's something that we are fairly confident there'll be funds in. So we needed to name it more directly than we have. We can point to the bridge program and our ability to do things, but we specifically name it. And so that's one of the projects. The next project is the North Broadway Pedestrian Bridge. And that's specifically named because we received state funds in the Move Ahead Washington Funding Package that just went through. And so we don't know yet when those funds will be made available because the state and the Washington State Department of Transportation are going through their prioritization process with all of the funds that are authorized in that package. So we don't know which biennium those monies will be made available. Could be soon, it could be somewhere in the, I think, five different biennium of that package. So we don't know that yet. And the next project was the 75th Street Southwest Bicycle Pedestrian Corridor. And that's over near the essentially Boeing headquarters between Hardison and Seaway Boulevard and the Seaway Transit Center. It's the central hill climb from the two different areas there within the southwest sort of aerospace industrial area. And we're looking at that. We are probably on a contingency list for federal funds to start the design of that project. And so it needed to be named more specifically than being part of the implementation of the Bicycle Master Plan, which is noted as a different category within this. So basically, all of our projects live within all the plans that we have. So the Bicycle Master Plan, and then as we move forward and the ideas begin to evolve and they become more specific, then we name them and move them to more specifically named projects on the list and move forward. And so this is just this year's six-year TIP as we move forward. It's been through the Transportation Advisory Committee and they've recommended moving forward. So every year I take it to the TAC and then bring it to Planning Commission. And then tomorrow I start my process with the council and go through and it ends up with a public hearing at council. And then if they authorize it, it moves forward and I move it forward to the state. Are there any questions about anything within?
Yes, does anyone have a question? Go ahead, Adam.
I had a couple of questions from last year's. You indicated there's three things that are new to the list. Was there anything that has dropped off the list?
Not this year because I don't take anything off until it's been officially accepted by council. So our process for finishing a project is that council accepts it, meaning that it's completely done and we're done with the funding and we're not, you know, any of the issues around our final contracts are finished and/or we're not doing any of the warranty work as far as making sure that all the plants are still alive and some of those things. So that's sort of the, and because it's a six-year rolling list, there's not really a need to, you know, immediately take things off the list. So this year, there isn't anything that came off. There were three or four that came off last year. And off the top of my head, I'm not remembering what they were.
And just from understanding, when you put this list together, there's 81 projects listed here. Is there a limit to the number of projects? I mean, is this just kind of a wish list? You just put everything on there that might possibly be something the city wants to do? Or is there some sort of requirement to restrict it or to limit it at some level?
So as part of the comprehensive plan update, the transportation element is looked at. And this list is actually by reference, it's one of the appendices in the transportation element. And so when that is built, that actually comes out of the lists that are built from when usually a consultant looks at all of the projects within the city that fit in those categories are affected by how they evaluate the city and the levels of service that are across all the different ways, transportation, all the different modes. And these are the projects that are needed in these specific areas to solve or at least mitigate the transportation needs of the city of Everett in the future. Those lists are built. Now they're built at a higher level and built out for over 30 years essentially, give or take. And then put into sort of 10-year buckets, if you will. And then this list sort of expands from there on that. And then I use the list from there because there's different other sort of minor plans, like I referenced the Bicycle Master Plan that sort of takes some of those ideas and makes it a little more detailed than you would put into the transportation of the comprehensive plan. You know you need to do active transportation things, bicycles, there needs, needs of pedestrians. But at that level, you don't need to identify everywhere you need to do something where the Bicycle Master Plan takes it to a more granular level. And so, and then this list, as we get closer to doing some of those projects, they become more specific. My goal is to never have two pages of this because it's financially unconstrained. It really at some point becomes, you know, why do it? I mean, why have that many things on there? Because it's just a really big number.
Yeah, and I guess that's kind of why I asked. So there is some method to not just throwing everything at it?
Well, not throwing everything, but having enough there. Because the reason that it's used to authorize staff to go forth and seek funding from transit side and from public work side is that as we approach all of the different funders, all the different state and federal grants and grant or agencies, they change their criteria every year or every funding cycle. And we never know exactly what projects are going to fit their criteria. And so this allows us to be flexible. And it also allows us to know, I mean, some projects will score well for design. And then we know we're going to need to get other monies from other places to do the next phase of it. It may be construction, we may need to purchase right away, whatever we need to do. And so it's a, it's a way to keep all the projects moving. And so it's just a method that's been used successfully over the years to continue moving projects forward because on the transportation side, we have a lot of issues to work on and we have to be very targeted with our funds as we solve, you know, each of the issues we work on. And so with the funders being, you know, not funding the entire project and just saying, we'll give you money for this phase, we have to be very careful with how we fund each thing. And so that allows us that flexibility as we move forward. So that's just the, sort of how that's evolved for the process that we use to get funding.
Any other commissioner questions?
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Just a quick clarification based on Commissioner Yanisak's question. Are there any on the list that are in the pipeline that are imminent? You said that when the council accepts it, they're removed from the list. But are there some on the list that are in process?
Well, there are a number of projects there that are, that are in different phases. I mean, to go down the list and say which ones are...
If that's overly burdensome, I'm not asking that. I guess I'm just asking a more generalized question about, is there a significant portion of the list that represents projects that are in the pipeline and will be imminently presented to council?
Not as complete, but there'll be different phases. So how that works is that all, anytime that a project moves to, to start, we accept funds, we accept grant funds and begin. We have, we go forth with an ordinance to council and council passes an ordinance. We call it a Plans and Systems Ordinance. So council passes an ordinance that says that we're setting aside, we, the council, are setting aside funds to do this phase of the project. So it'll start and say, we're working on 41st Street Freight Corridor, we're setting aside these monies. And it will, in the ordinance, say that the city has received state funds, federal funds, and we're setting aside X amount of local funds. So it's not, so it's all there. And then it becomes a program in a fund. So you can look at the budget and see where all of these things are if you were to go through and look at each of these. So, I mean, I could as an answer go through those and show you all of them. But for me to do it off the top of my head, I'm, it would take a while. But each of those things, it's very regulated. It's not just, it's a, it's a process that we always come back to council and council is authorizing each step of the way.
Thank you. So as a follow-up on these questions, if one is interested in a particular project, is there a place where the public can go to the website and see the status or phase of any of these projects? Or at least the active ones?
Well, this is, this exists if you go onto the City of Everett website and go into the search box and just put in TIP, it will get you to this link and you'll see, not this one because it's draft, but you'll see the one that's passed. So you'll see last year's six-year list. And then on the city's public works... And then on the City's Public Works page, you will see all of our projects that are currently active. And so you can look at where those projects are. Most of those, and there's a little bit of lag time, because if they're just getting started in their design phase, there are just not really enough information to put out there. But if they're in the design phases, they have actual pages that are set up, because they're starting the process of contacting the stakeholders and contacting the neighbors and neighborhoods that they're in to begin the process of, we're thinking about designing whatever the project is in their neighborhood, and this is what we're doing, and we'd like your input. And so, so those exist on the page too, but it's, you would find that on the project page.
Okay, right. We need more detail. Any other commissioner questions?
Yes, thank you. I guess I'm kind of trying to wrap my head around the large amount of projects that are in the tip and just continuing to throw them on. Would, like your presentation with the other groups, I mean, are you asked to take things off? I'm trying to understand the purpose. I mean, if I read here, we're, one of the things is we're asking to agree and vote on the proposed program as consistent with and implements the city's comprehensive plan. So how do I, as a planning commission, based on your presentation, certify that that truly is happening? Just a softball for you.
So what this does is it takes the document that is from the comprehensive plan, from the transportation element, it moves through the six-year TIP. So this is the list that's built from the plans that have been authorized by council and have gone through planning commission, gone through the Transportation Advisory Committee. So this list has come from that. And then the step that you're taking here is that you're recommending to council that they continue to authorize staff to seek funding for the projects that are in the comprehensive plan and that have been vetted through the various processes that council has put in place and that are required by the state law for us to do. And so it's just a process that is, I know it's a big list and it's a big dollar amount that we're narrowing down to, but there are controls on the other end. It's not just saying, go forth and do $5 billion worth of stuff until you run out of money. The control is that none of the projects move forward into the real money phases without council authorizing the beginning of each of the contracts and each of the beginning phases of actual construction. This is just to authorize the collection of funds to begin the processes.
Thank you. I think one other question on, so in the, as it relates to the comprehensive plan and how it blends in there, so I think I'm following that, that was very helpful, thank you for that. In the, like, one of the things we're doing is we're looking at an alternative where we're trying to put quite a bit of density in transportation quarters. So I'm thinking of maybe like the intersection of Highway or Evergreen Way and Airport Road. So as far as safety in that area, as far as transportation and movement through there, would, in support of that, how would this blend in with that? If we were putting more density in that area, it would become more unsafe. Is this set up to actually have projects that are available to be, to address that and look at that? Or is that something that would be coming later? Or is it to, I mean, I know that would be very defined, and this is supposed to be more generic? If you could help me with that.
It is generic, but it really is, it's both already there and can be there in a more focused way as you move forward, because it's based on moving from the comprehensive plan and moving through the other planning processes to, if you will, the final project, product, the construction of various, you know, projects and transit services and those kinds of things that move through. So we use this to keep the other, and to keep other folks informed, the Puget Sound Regional Council, the regional planning entity, as well as the other folks that also plan things in our area, the State Department of Transportation, the county. Everyone looks at all of these things, and that's part of why the six-year TIP requirements. Everyone has to do this so that everyone can see what everyone's thinking about doing. And so all of that gets put together, and we're really all competing in the same pots of money to try to get the best and safest projects out the door to do things. And so, but one of the things in the transportation element that can be influenced by how you treat density and how you treat where you put transit to work with that, or transit and transportation as you work with that, is that it would be, I guess, more efficient use of transportation dollars to do that in those kinds of environments. Also, just from a grant perspective, typically if you're putting something in an area like that, it's a lot more successful grant application, just in general, from years of experience, if you're looking to put something where, and the city's about to be in a good position once we start to get real light rail stations being put into place and get closer to that. Those are the kinds of things that a lot of complementary projects in and around the area of a light rail station are very successful and frankly are, you know, being looked at and worked on, and it's why we included all of the high-capacity rail in our plan way earlier than we needed to, just to remind everybody that we're working towards that.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up question based on what Commissioner Ballard asked, just to help me understand the process, because I'm sure the public would like to understand it as well. So the list is not meant to be completely comprehensive necessarily, but it's meant to broadly include all of the things that we could potentially seek grant funding for. Does this list preclude a project from being pursued if it's not on the list? Like, for example, what Commissioner Ballard just mentioned?
So, no, and I'll just give you an example. So if you look, if you're on page, it's page one, so it's after the, I'm not sure how you have it presented, but page one of the six-year TIP, in the second column, you have local access and other projects. It's number one. It says Bridge Rehabilitation Program. So just to give you an example, so that exists there. So if I needed to apply for a grant for a bridge that I don't have named, then it's magically in the Bridge Rehabilitation Program. But once I know I have it named and I need to break it out and I have time to, like right now, I have Marshland Bridge Replacement, and I'm going through the process, I've gone through the process and will be putting the name in, like I've done with the other bridges that are above it. If you look over in the first column under Principal Arterials, if you see where Marshland Bridge Replacement is in bold, number 12, items 10 and 11 above it are earlier additions as we've sought grant funds and added bridges, Merrill and Ring Creek Bridge and Edgewater Creek Bridge Replacement. So what we've tried to do with this, and we've tried to do with that, is to always have programs. So essentially, if you'll look under the, again, over on the right column, there's different maintenance programs and other kinds of programs that are kind of generic, and they're there to capture those things that are sort of late-breaking ideas, if you will, for a planning document. I don't know what exactly that is, but if something comes up, we typically have something that's a normal line of business for public works or a normal line of business for transit. But we know that for the process, we're going to, if we are successful in getting grant funds, we're going to need to name the project. And so with a one-year cycle on this, we have the time to do that, because we are seeking state and federal funds. We usually only have to go a cycle or two, saying that it's in a program and it's not specifically named. And so that's how we capture that. So...
That's very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Terry.
If there are no further questions and no one online, I think it's helpful. I'm sorry?
Oh, no, no, I didn't have a question. I wanted to thank you for the tremendous amount of work that this list represents and for your thorough explanations of all the questions this evening. I was just going to make a motion that we recommend the six-year plan.
So that you're recommending that we pass Resolution 22-001?
I am.
I second that.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Atkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Ballard?
Aye.
Commissioner Chatters?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lavra?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and thank you. That was helpful. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the centering and advancing equity in our work item.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lavra. I'll give a brief introduction of myself, who already introduced myself today, but we have Kay Barnes here, the city's equity manager, who's going to walk us through a tool that she developed, along with some help, I'd imagine. And you're welcome to sit there if you want, either way is fine. So Kay has developed this diversity wheel tool. It's an appendix or Exhibit A to your memo for this item today, and she's been bringing somewhat of a roadshow to our boards and commissions to talk through different ways to think about identity and equity and diversity and inclusion. And Kay's been doing a lot of great work with our city staff and workforce. A lot of it has been around implementation of the mayoral directive that's in Exhibit B to your packet today. And so we've had a chance to see some of that work in action at a staff level and happy to have that being brought to our boards and commissions. And of course, we thought we'd take the opportunity to tack on a little bit after Kay's segment to connect this work and this way of approaching the issue to the comprehensive planning update work that we're going to be doing. Just briefly, it's going to be but a tip of the iceberg, but we thought both sharing the resources and everything would be helpful. So, Kay, thank you for coming and take us away. And I think...
Thank you. Thank you all. I'm going to do a little bit of talking. Thank you. Going to do a little bit of talking, so bear with me. It's not going to take us that long, and I'm just going to go ahead and dive into it. So my name is Kay Barnes, my pronouns are she and her. So what is this diversity wheel? As you can see there on the screen, it's a tool that we're using to build connections and inclusivity within the city and outside. So think about the work you do. How does inclusion, diversity, equity, and belonging stand out during your engagement with team members, commission members here, and others in your organization? Or when you come to the table to do the work, how do you leverage the knowledge sharing and turn those ideas into actions, right? So again, thank you for inviting me today. So I appreciate the work that you've done and you're going to be doing, you know, as planning commissioners. So I thank you for your civil service. So before continuing, I acknowledge my ancestors. I stand on their shoulders, so without them, I wouldn't be here today to share this wonderful space with you. So I want to go through an agreement with you, and I'll get through them quickly. This is the whole thing that we do, so while I'm doing this, can you go ahead and take a breath with me? You know, not with me, but take a breath as I'm going through this and come present into the room. So to promote psychological safety in this session, we agreed to practice active and emphatic listening and sharing. Challenge the idea, not the person. Be both teachers and learners. Take space and make space. Stories stay, lessons leave. Use I-statements. One microphone? Be here now. So the other part of this is the community norms. We are in this together, and to level, set expectations, we challenge ourselves to embrace discomfort, trust intent, and name impact. Be honest with ourselves and with others. Acknowledge judgments and assumptions, including our own. Except that things may remain unresolved, we might not feel a sense of closure. So remember, this is a brave space. Be aware of triggers, and no judgment zone too as well. It's rather interactive, and because you are commissioners, and I think to really get interactive in this, I would recommend that you use this at one of your retreats if you should do one of those kinds of things, use it as an activity. So let's look at the overview of the wheel. Is there a bigger one? Oh, you can use your packet too. You can look at it in your packet. Perfect, perfect. All right, so the overview of the wheel. So this model is adopted from Loden and Rosenbauer around 1990s. So this is a wheel that's still evolving, so it's being tailored for a purpose here. And I'm going to ask the question, you don't have to answer it, but have you worked with a diversity wheel before? So the tool was created to help city staff, again, volunteers, board and team members, in ways to build trust, to be bridge builders, foster inclusion with each other and in community. It helps to see, hear, and value who's at the table and to recognize who's not at the table. Its intention is to keep us mindful as we interact with others and to keep equity in the forefront. We are all on the journey together in this work of equity, inclusivity, and diversity. Let's offer each other grace, as I don't know all the answers, but I feel as a group, we will definitely discuss them when it comes time to do that. So we're going to use the five-step process in exploring the dimensions or factors that shape our life experiences, lived experiences, and biases. Factors similar to you or different from you. So the wheel represents the various dimensions of diversity. So to be truly inclusive and welcoming to all, it's important for us to understand the many factors of diversity of an individual, their culture, and the individual and collective experiences related to those dimensions. Again, we're going to go on, we're going to start with step one. So you want to consider who you are and in understanding yourself. I thought I understood me. No, there's a lot of layers here. So what do I mean? For me, it was required to do deep dives into all facets of my life, where I came from or my origin, my family's history, Black History Studies, and my personal journey too over the years. How has that made me special? What makes your I different? Could it be the external factors, my appearance or your appearance, the color of your skin or the clothes you wear? What are our lived or life experiences, social factors of intersectionality? So for step two, we want to find our personal stories. There are many dimensions within the board or city or organization and the community, so many attributes that make up our personality, and you would probably agree to that. So if we're missing any, feel free to include them in, and you can always share it with us, like, hey Kay, you forgot this one. So please let us know. So I'm stopping at this point, and we want to discuss like a couple of areas of this wheel. We're going to take a look at it, so please use your sheet that you have. So the first circle is the center, is you or me, right? And the second circle are the social factors that influence our experience, our lived experiences. The third circle represents the work or environment, your factors of culture that add to how you experience your gathering space. So the fourth circle is the outermost circle. These are the ISMs or systems of power. They directly or indirectly impact your life. So the... So the systems of power can separate people who don't like, don't look like you, talk like you, or act like you. Where do they exist in your life? So before going further, this is the exercise that you can do at your retreat. So here's a part of it. So let's talk about our story a little. So take a look at the will again and see where you are. So it says you are here. So the next circle are your social factors. The next is the organization or association qualifications. And the final, again, is the isms. So we'll go over all of these in just a moment. For now, select a minimum of three factors. We'll come back and examine yours, or you'll have it and you'll take it and you'll have a look at it later on. I'll share three of mine. So I'm a woman, I'm Black, I'm over 40, and a volunteer. So this is what I've told you, and this is a part of my story. So we'll pause quickly while you make your own little notes, and then we'll go ahead and pick it up. Time's up. So put your answers to the side. Let's continue, right? So looking at the will, you see four dimensions of the will explained again. So think of the members of the team or people you may be meeting or you're about to start a discussion with. So again, you have yourself, social factors, your organizational qualifications and systems or power of isms. So this is all there in that diversity will. So the center of the circle, we start, I think of this, and pardon me for saying this, but what comes to mind right away, because we've all heard the saying of, we peel the layers back on an onion, you know? We're not onions, but I'm just saying that to me, that's a huge visual for me to start pulling those layers back before we get to what is this, right? So we also have the social factors here. That's the second circle. So these are the dimensions, your gender, your place of origin, your nationality, where you're born, ancestry, a family, migration of ethnicity, cultural background. So these factors inform us as to how we show up in the world. And I wanna share with you that in the context of ethnicity, heritage, and cultural background, I did a little extra research and was reminded of the social construct of race. So the origin is one of an idea coined by a social scientist in the 1700s. It was designed to define certain groups of people as superior and certain groups as inferior. It's an idea of race and not a scientific idea. For example, I see a scientific idea would be if you or I did blood test, would this categorize us? It would categorize our blood types, right? So the third circle is our workforce, our work environment, our meeting spaces, community engagement where we work, positions of influence or power, union affiliation, appointive. Again, these factors inform us again how we show up in the world and at work. Do we bring our full selves to work? God bless. So the fourth circle speaks to assumptions and biases that intersect with our lived experiences. The systems of power are ethnocentrism, ageism, classism, sexism, ableism, and racism that directly or indirectly impact us. These are the powers that can divide us because maybe we don't look and talk alike in this space or conference room. These systems of power are brought on through legislative or governmental action. And I think this is an appropriate story for you as planning commissioners. So here's an example. Recall World War II. White soldiers returning home from war, looking to start a life. They had a choice of unions to buy a home in what's called Levittown with low-interest-rate loan and to send children off to college. Nine white veterans coming home had a choice of one union, and that was the Porters Union, and no access to loans to buy a home in Levittown. One group built equity or began the creation of wealth from their homes and sent their kids to college, and the other group didn't have the same opportunity due to explicit biases by government rules and policies. Therefore, zero opportunity to create wealth. So this is how, a part of how the wealth gap began. So in this case, differences did matter based on skin color, privilege, similarities, and differences. Over time, situations can change, right? So a source I defer you to is Segregated by Design, written by Richard Rothstein. Pardon me if I've got that name wrong. So it's animated, and it could enhance what you're reading in the book titled The Color of Law. So before we wanna move any further, I will be the icebreaker for this one and share my story. So in my story, I did tell you that I'm a woman, I'm Black, over 40, and I volunteer, so this is a part of my story. I've told you that, and some of this you can see. So I want you to reflect on that fourth circle. And these are the biases or assumptions that may surface when you're guessing about me or making assumptions about me. So what you can't see are the many qualities you don't see. For example, my educational background, I hold a master's degree. I'm a grandmother who is a social justice advocate. I'm a ninja over 40 and may not be seen by millennials. And let me explain that just in case. I don't wanna, you know, offend anyone. So that last statement was referred to or came from Valerie Alexander. She's a CEO. She did a TEDx on bias, and she used the term ninja. So be careful with using the term ninja because that might not be, you have to be mindful when you use that word. It might not be a good word. So anyway, my intersections on the fourth circle, and some of you can think, I know women in the room can relate to this, sexism and probably some classism here, ageism and racism. So those are some of my, a few of my intersections. Did you make any assumptions about me based on what you see, vice what I've told you or you've asked questions of me? So again, these are the things that are going through your head as you practice when you go into your rooms and you go and do your meetings anywhere, anytime. So let's go on to step three. And I'm kinda wrapping it up. It's almost, we're almost done here. So would you treat a person differently based on what you assume you know or based on things you don't know? So it could be abilities, skin color, or gender. This is where I would take deep dives in my thinking and keep this in mind when talking with others. Or if you do treat a person different from you, ask yourself why. Spend some time there at some point, like I treated Kay differently. Why did I do that? Hmm. So ask those questions of yourself. So think about inclusion. Let's say you're in a planning commission meeting. Is everyone given an opportunity to share their ideas, feedback? Do they feel safe in doing so? Do you interrupt a person in a meeting and not allow them to fully share their ideas? Is each person valued and given the opportunity to voice their diverse thoughts and perspectives? What policies or practices are barriers to inclusion in this team? Answering yes to the question above would shine light on an inclusive workspace, inclusive team or not. So there are exercises you can do to help team members better understand. I have one that requires ringing the bell if you're in a meeting and folks start to chat while you're talking. So you can ring the bell. It's almost like a Pavlovian puppy or something, you know? It's like, okay, the bell's ringing. That means I'm speaking over Christine. Stop it, stop it, that sort of thing. So that's an exercise we can actually maybe at a retreat too or something. Great. So on page two, we've got a whole series of terms there, and it's self-explanatory. You have the remember piece, and then you have the terms piece. Self-explanatory, take a look at them. I'm sorry, I'm behind the power curve, but ableism was one I wasn't really familiar with, so I'm still learning intersectionality with everyone else too as well. So take a look at those terms. Something I'd like you to do before going to your meetings. Let's say you didn't have a chance to review the diversity will or to put it in your head. Please read Remember section. Words have power. Biases can exclude people. Be mindful in your interactions with others. It's not enough to say that you don't intend to be hurtful. It's the actual impact that matters regardless of intentions. The next piece is when you welcome all, you listen. You're aware of your own advantages and disadvantages and how you can use them to make a difference. Check your assumptions to unlearn biases and stereotypes. There they are. Stand beside and walk with others. So please take that with you, and I call that be here now. And it goes back to promoting psychological safety in the meeting you're attending or the workspace that you're engaging in. So in closing, again, I ask you to commit yourself to use the tool daily as this will become your practice in inclusion, diversity, and equity. Put equity in the forefront of your work. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions for me? Put your hand down.
Ms. Barnes, thank you for this work. It is so important, and I appreciate that you are here doing it. I guess I just, I wanted to say, I was reviewing the material that you gave us in addition to the mayoral directive, which I read before, but I recalled that there were some specific goals in the directive in terms of creating a recruitment plan to build a more diverse workforce, et cetera, et cetera. And when I went to look for some of those tools, I did not find them. So I guess this is kind of an extraneous question to what you were speaking on. Do those tools exist? Were they created? Can the public access them? Because what you were discussing, of course, there is an interpersonal aspect to it, but a system works the way it works. You've of course heard of racism without racist. So the system will do what it does even if the folks in it have the best of intentions. And the way you gauge whether or not change is occurring is benchmarking data. And so I was looking for some of that and didn't find it. So do you happen to know if that's available?
Okay, so thank you for that question. That's a good question. You're not the only one asking. We wanna see what you're doing, so we're totally aware that the community needs to see what we're doing. So it comes down to having a webpage on the internet so that folks can go in and see where's the city of Everett, what are they doing with diversity and equity and inclusion, all of those things. So that webpage is not in existence yet. It is in the making, just so you know. And thank you, Demi. I'll take that back with me and say, I gotta ask that question. So we need to get that going. Thank you. As far as data is concerned, we don't have the data. There are some projects that we've done within the city. We have what we're calling, it's a dashboard, but it's not a visible dashboard to the public. There's a whole series of activities that departments throughout the city have done with equity. So those are the kinds of things that we like to get posted on that internet so that we can share that. Fire department has done this. HR has done that. So the recruitment plan, it's in the works. We got stuck there. And I'm the person too that don't like to get stuck, but I can only do so much alone. So that's gonna come to as well, and we'll get that branded and get that posted too once it's done. So I thank you for the question. I hope I answered the questions that you asked.
You did. I appreciate that. I mean, this is an ongoing process. This is not a single moment in time, so I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any other questions?
I have a somewhat related question, I guess. Looking at the mayoral directive, particularly the very last section over there indicates that a report summarizing progress, and I'm assuming specifically referencing these various dates that were set out, some pretty firm dates. They're supposed to be twice a year. Have those reports been being provided to the mayor?
The mayor gets a quarterly from me effective in 2022. She gets a quarterly from me from the work that I'm doing as well as the work from some of the other departments.
And I guess what I'm wondering is specifically with regard to the initiatives here and the dates and the metrics that were set out, have those been met? I mean, because I'm looking, the most recent one should have been by June 30th of 2021. I guess, did that happen?
Some of those things are gonna get carried over into, I don't wanna say are revised, initiative, but we will be doing another initiative too. Those were some hard deadlines. It was pretty aggressive, that initiative, just so you know. Yeah.
Okay. Well, and again, I just point out because I think these are all excellent intentions, and I, but frankly, I'm always skeptical. Talk is easy getting things done, and putting firm deadlines like this looks great, but if they're not being met and no one's actually behind them, I think it's very empty and...
Trust me, it's been rough.
Okay.
It's been rough, just so you know.
Okay. Well, good. I guess I would just like to see if the mayor puts out this directive. I would hope that these things can be followed and be met, or at least that there's, you know, serious effort being made to track that.
For sure.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Well, I just wanted to say that I really think that these tools that we were shown are really valuable because having worked in large engineering organizations, we do things the way we've always done them, you know? Unless there's like a regulation that says you have to do social justice on this project.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I've also discovered that there has to be an accountability mechanism. So it's a learning experience for all of us as well. So yeah, yeah. So what's next, right? So are we finished with this subject or...?
What a fantastic segue into what is next, and thank you, Kay. And yeah, definitely, some of these have been put into place. Let me publicly apologize, Kay, for being late on a deliverable, which is one of our departmental progress reports on that. And I think we are, yeah, we're doing a lot of work on, you know, one of the first steps is trying to build an inclusive environment for city staff as kind of the frontline workers. And there's a vast variety of types of work and everything within the city. And we're working on that on the staff side. Wanted to bring you a little bit of a preview and an offer to pick up on some of this work in the work of the planning commission. And so I wanted to touch on probably the two most significant ways that we can implement this work in our work through the comprehensive plan, and that's through engagement, and that is through the outcomes of the plan. So we included a couple of, I tried to be very slim with the reading list on this one, although some of them are webpages with as many as 500 more resources per. And I've done some work reading through quite a bit of these. I guess it, you mentioned walking the walk, and a lot of that is internal within the city's workforce and our recruitment and our tone within the halls of city government and all of that. And a lot of that is gonna be a challenge for us to accomplish within our comprehensive plan update. Engagement is the first place that this starts. So equity is thankfully receiving a lot of attention in this comprehensive planning cycle at all levels of government. Puget Sound Regional Council has an excellent equity work program that they've stood up, an Equity Advisory Committee, and you see some of these policy guides and toolkits from Puget Sound Regional Council. The, you can see in Vision 2050 right here, the multi-county planning policy to conduct inclusive engagement to identify and address the diverse needs of the region's residents. Well set, concise. the diverse needs of the region's residents. Well set, concise and, and targeted. Can't remember what. Part of this, one of the PSRC guidebooks has this four-part strategy for inclusive engagement. That's the first step is to make sure that as we, as I look, as, as we, as we do engagement, we're not in the middle of a, of a public participation period right now, but when we do, we want to make sure that we're reaching the entire diversity and range of populations within the city. So the, the PSRC considerations for equitable engagement suggest a four-part strategy. And the first one is to identify those impacted communities. And that's both knowing the community of Everett at large, as well as those who are going to be most impacted by the decisions that we make and the plans that we put in place, both positively and negatively. And then it is to develop an engagement strategy. And then numbers three and four are different ways of implementing that engagement strategy. A couple of questions for us to keep in mind as we conduct this work. And we'll come back to either with a more full discussion item on public participation or better yet weave it through this equity lens and, and this public participation discussion, weave it through all of the subsequent meetings that we have. But looking at what are the demographics of, of Everett? Do the populations we typically conduct outreach with reflect the diversity of the communities that we serve? I think it's fair to say that in the past, that has not necessarily been the case. Are there areas in Everett at higher risk of displacement? That is definitely the case. And I've got a map showing that next. And then are there communities in Everett that are experiencing disparities related to housing, jobs, transportation, education, healthcare, et cetera? And I think the answer to that question is yes as well. And we'll do some work to peel apart what, what factors are influencing that and what we can do about it. Again, PSRC has a couple of great tools. The map on the left there is a displacement risk map. The darker orange colors show the areas that are at higher risk of displacement. The factors that go into the risk of displacement are socio-demographic, race and ethnicity, linguistic isolation, educational attainment, housing tenure, housing cost burden, household income, transportation, access to jobs, proximity to transit, and importantly for our work, proximity to future light rail and streetcar service. Neighborhood characteristics like proximity to services like supermarkets, restaurants, parks and schools. Housing indicators, development capacity and median rental prices, and civic engagement measured by voter turnout. So we know that especially around the light rail stations and citywide, there's going to be a significant risk of displacement, but that's something that staff is particularly concerned about where the light rail stations are going to have a significant impact on the market, both the direct construction of it, as well as the appreciation in values and everything that's going to come with that light rail construction. We also opened the meeting talking about our housing strategy and the need to find additional housing capacity. Some of those housing types, new construction, increases in development capacity often bring increases in property values that can incentivize the redevelopment into higher price, higher cost housing that has a risk of economic displacement. We'll be building light rail and infrastructure and everything that has the risk of direct displacement. So some of this PSRC mapping can show the areas that have that highest risk. And we'll dive a little bit more into that as we conduct the comprehensive plan update. Then on the right, there is the, an opportunity map that shows elements of access to opportunity, which is defined as situations and conditions that place individuals in a position to be more likely to succeed and excel. And there is a dozen or so indicators that define that access to opportunity. Education, economic health, housing, neighborhood quality, mobility and transportation, and health and environment. So these are some data sources that can help us start to answer some of those questions. The next step after understanding a little bit about the, the populations that we're serving and the, the, some of the challenges and risks to those populations and some of the needs and hopes and dreams for the future on the positive side is to develop an engagement strategy. The, this graphic on the left here comes from the Massachusetts. It's the Boston's version of Puget Sound Regional Council and they had a, what's it called here? Community engagement recipe book. So it's on page three of the PSRC considerations for equitable engagement. Three-step process, inform, engage and empower. So I think so far we're doing a good job with informing and we've got a lot of work to do on the engaging and the empowering, but we still have time for that. Then establish meaningful relationships. We need to build a foundation of trust and collaboration. We need to value the time that people give and make clear how the input will influence decisions. And then finally removing barriers to engagement by making public meetings accessible, providing multiple pathways to participate, and then tailoring outreach to the preferences of identified communities. So when I started the, the meeting today, we talked about some of these new resources coming to the comprehensive plan update. And I think this engagement topic is probably the one that could most benefit from these resources. I think we've got good toolkits. I think we know how to do it. I think we could use a little bit more, a little bit more manpower, person power, staff power.
Staffing.
People power.
Yeah, people power. Thank you, Kay. Thank you, Kay. And that's something that, that these resources might be able to provide. And then also just helping with some targeted engagement plans. So when we go out for our next public, round of public participation, I think we need to go to where people are. I think we need to work on our language. So we've got 11% of the city. So one out of 10 is not speak English at home. We need to make sure that we're reaching those folks. We need to make sure that we are out in the community geographically. I think the ability to have online meetings and remote participation is great for a lot of folks, but there's also a lot of folks that just want to walk on by and talk to a person face to face. So all of this is a problem statement more than a solution at this point, but it's something that we're going to be working hard on and hopefully bringing some resources to bear on it. Next is of course, the, the engagement is going to inform what some of the needs and, and goals are out in the community and what some of the challenges that people are facing. But then at the end of the day, we're going to need to have results in this plan. We have in the multi-county planning policies, I think says it well with our charge here, and that's to prioritize service and access to opportunity for people of color, people with low incomes and historically underserved communities. And then also taking a strong focus to a reduction of health disparities and improving health outcomes across the region. I think it's been said frequently that your zip code says a lot about your life expectancy, just to boil it down to, to two particular numbers. And that's, that's something that we need to work on. The Growth Management Act was amended in last year's session with House Bill 1220 that added some new requirements for housing planning specifically. And this is going to be folded into our comprehensive plan update as well. So the housing element is going to need to identify policies and regulations that currently result in racially disparate impacts, displacement and exclusion in housing. And then it's going to have to do something about it. So our plan update is going to have to identify policies and regulations to address and begin to undo these racially disparate impacts and address the displacement, displacement and exclusion in housing. Easier said than done, but we've got a couple of years to work on it and we have a lot of tools and support. Like I said, there's, basically every level of government above us is working hard on this with the resources and the tools and the strategies. Identifying areas at risk of displacement and establishing anti-displacement policies wrap up those new requirements in the Growth Management Act. Like I said, just a bit of a problem statement, a bit of a preview of what is to come. And I just wanted to get a little bit of this out there to tag along to Kay's presentation today. Hope you were able to take a look at some of those resources and happy to take any questions on this aspect.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to add to your problem statement. So with regard to outreach, just talking to folks in the community, a, a lot of folks are renters. In fact, the majority of our residents are renters. And yet the, the decisions that are made historically have been strictly made by folks who own the property. And of course, folks aren't renters because they don't want to own property. That's usually a, a function of economic access and some of the historical disparate impacts of policy that Ms. Barnes alluded to. So when we're going out and we're seeking public input, are we ensuring that we are specifically targeting the voices of renters? And, and how do we do that? So I guess that, that's what I mean when I say, I'm going to add to your problem statement there. And when we talk about trying to mitigate harms for low-income residents who are disproportionately people of color, that also means that we often see people of color disproportionately renting versus owning. So you can see that the pattern there. So we, we, we need to find a way to be available for the input and the voices of folks who are renters and ensure that they understand that their contribution to our future planning efforts are necessary and wanted.
Thank you. I think that's well said. And I think it is a, it's a challenge to get public participation no matter what. And it's even a greater challenge to get participation from folks who are not used to having their voices heard even when they are able to speak up. We, we have some ideas. We're going to be working on that with the, with the resources and everything, but having, partnering with community groups that exist on the ground. And we have a couple that we're starting to build relationships with now because that's an, an in to a community directly. Now that the, we have the ability to go out and do in-person events again, trying to make sure that we're going to all neighborhoods and visiting schools or community centers or something like that to make it easy for folks to drop by. Mentioned in those examples was reducing barriers. So there's things like addressing childcare, having meetings at different times of day to address shift work and making sure that everybody has a chance, even if they're working at, at not nine to five jobs. There's compensating folks for their time. So if we do have like a focus group or if we have a, yeah, a focus group, I guess, or a, or an advisory committee, a lot of folks can't afford to take significant amounts of time to basically give, give their comments, give their input, share their, their stories and their feedback and everything. And so maybe applying some of these resources towards compensating folks for their time to make sure that we're not only getting the folks who have spare time and resources. Yeah.
And I, I guess a good question to ask commissioners might be, how do you think people that don't normally participate, how do you think they want to be engaged? I can say that when Commissioner Atkins was on the Housing Action Plan Committee, you know, he did a really good job of helping, helping us get connected with other groups and giving presentations. And so that was sort of in the middle of the pandemic and, you know, it was, it was still really difficult. But I guess asking the planning commission to think about that as well. How do you think they would want to be engaged?
Yeah, I think they, that kind of concentric circles or something where, where you, you talk to somebody and at the end of the conversation, you ask them to give you two references to go talk to, to. All of that takes time and resources and we haven't been able to cobble it together so far, but we're not at that stage in the plan update yet. The city council and other boards and commissioners are great. I guess aggregators of, of, of community are, are able to connect to community. We have boards and commissions that, we have a diversity board. We have a youth advisory commission. And, and we'll go to some of those as well. And I think we'll check in regularly with progress reports. So some of this is, is putting this out there that I don't think we're satisfied so far. We've only just begun. This is a three-year update process. We've been through one major public participation effort, which was the scoping period. That's probably among the least interesting to your average community member because it should be interesting because that's how you define the scope of the project, but it's kind of so wide open that it's hard to respond to. But at the same time, it takes a lot of time and resources. I know translation is one that I've done a lot of thinking about and you want to make sure that it's sustainable. So if you're going to translate one document, that's not going to work. You're going to need to have that translation ability throughout the life of the project and make sure that that's going to be able to go two, two ways so that it's not just informing, but you're able to communicate what you've done with the information. But there's a lot of work that we need to do there because I, I don't think staff is going to be satisfied unless we've, we've done a lot of progress, both on the engagement front and on the outcome front.
Have you found, have you found that our neighborhood groups have been able to tailor their approach more effectively to the different, you know, sub, sub-communities, I guess? I know the neighborhood groups seem pretty successful. The meetings that I have attended in the past, they're well-attended by a diverse group of people. Have you reached out to them to ask specifically for advice on that?
Yeah. No, not yet. Not yet. We've been to a couple of neighborhood groups. I think it's not evenly distributed with, throughout the city, the activity of the neighborhood groups. There are some that are fairly quiet and there's some that are very active.
It might be a good place to reach out, to ask their opinion on, on how, how maybe you could even encourage the less active neighborhood groups to bolster their attendance, to, to seek participation. And then they might be a good feeder into your larger effort.
Yeah, which would be fantastic because the neighborhood groups support more than just the, just the planning aspect. There's all the other parts of city government as well. I know we're not the only ones struggling with this.
It is also a fairly structured environment. They have leadership that they've elected. And so that kind of hierarchy tends to simplify things in terms of communication.
Great.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes, I had another question. What outreach has the city done with regards to the urban Indian community? Not including the Tleilip tribes in that outreach.
As part of this process, we have not yet. We have not yet.
Other than official notice to the tribes that, that we're required to give on our scoping notice. But yeah, not, not to the community members.
Yeah, I mean, I think that falls into this, that's exactly the, the type of community that we want to be engaged. We want to hear from, we want to connect with. And I think it's, you raise a good point that there's, that there's Indians affiliated with the Tleilip tribes who clearly have a strong interest and we want to make sure that we're communicating closely with the Tleilip tribal government, but then also those that maybe not be closely aligned with the government.
Yeah, I, I just don't want us to get into that kind of misconception that just consulting with Tleilip meets that, that requirement. Just because I mean, 60% of Native Americans are urban Indians that are, like me, that are living hundreds of miles away from their reservation.
Great. Thank you.
I just want to say that your dissatisfaction really pleases me because that is the starting point. And, and I also want to recognize how much we ask of our city staff with so little resources. Because that is a factor and, and that is a very real constraint that I know that are, the folks who work for the city deal with and struggle with. So thank you for that. I just lost my train of thought in my thank yous. I'm sorry. If I, if I reclaim it, I'll mention it again.
Question on the funding that you've got for like the Muslim.
Question on the funding that you've got for like the missing middle. Is there funding that could also be applicable to this, into the outreach? Are we asking for that? Are we looking at that?
Yeah, both of these. So the funding for the periodic update is fairly well wide open. And the middle housing grant would just have to be tied to that specific piece of the work program. So we've got the resources. We're a little bit worried about the capacity of the consultant community because we're not the only city doing an update. In fact, every city in this county and the three others to the south are doing it, too. But yes, absolutely. And if that's of all of the needs, this is the one that has risen to the top for us as the priority.
Thank you for taking this on. I know it's hard work, but it's important work.
Yeah.
When we're coming back, we're looking at rigorous ways to measure the accomplishments that I'm sure we're going to make.
I did remember, it was with regard to the neighborhood groups. I wanted to mention that I appreciate the neighborhood group structures. I think that there are ways that they are very effective. But there are also ways that they are not. For example, the Pinehurst-Beverly Park neighborhood meeting is the same day and time as the NAACP meeting every month. So I guess I'm just encouraging us to think beyond that. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, it's going to take every tool in the shed.
And my next question, I guess, is for Becky. Is there any data from the Rethink Housing Action Plan process that just talks about the percentage of participants who were renters and those who were homeowners?
In the plan, when we were going through the plan, are you talking about public input or community input?
Yes, like, do we have any kind of data that shows those that gave input, whether they were renters or homeowners?
We did ask that question in the survey, but it was an optional question. So we might have a little bit of that data, yeah. And I don't recall what it was, but I think it probably was more homeownership than renters that gave input into that process.
Well, I'd love to see that information. I'm sure that would help some of the discussions we've had today about the overabundance of homeowners' participation in the outreach process.
Are we ready for the next agenda item?
Good evening again, planning commissioners. It's very interesting being here in person, and it's great to see all of you here. Becky McCrery, Long Range Planning Manager. And tonight, I'm going to start us off with talking about the two code amendment projects that we've had. We have briefed you, so I'm going to give you a little bit of a recap on where we've been and then some changes that we've made since May after doing some more vetting internally, listening to some comments from the Planning Commission. And then we'll have more questions and discussion and tell you about next steps. So as you might recall, this is a response to House Bill 1220. And we talked a little bit about that in the last presentation about new requirements for the housing element in the comprehensive plan update. This also had an element to it that required cities and counties, was it counties also or cities? I don't recall. Yeah, cities to make sure that they had provisions for allowing the emergency housing and emergency shelter, so not precluding those things from being allowed in the city. And so we're responding to that there. That include transitional housing and permanent supportive housing. And the cities must allow them in zones where residential dwelling units are, as well as where hotels are allowed. And then, in addition to that, knowing that we lack a lot of shelter capacity, we cannot prohibit indoor emergency shelters and/or indoor emergency housing. And we talked about what the definitions of those were and that those need to be allowed where hotels are allowed. We see that in most recent cases where a jurisdiction will buy, say, a hotel and use that hotel as emergency shelter. So I think that some of that was getting, this was getting at some of those conditions. We have several policy documents that talk about needing to make sure that we have adequate amount of sheltering and housing for the community. We have policies in our comprehensive plan, the housing element. We have it in our Rethink Housing Action Plan. And then the recently adopted regional housing strategy that PSRC approved talks about having to have adequate space for those uses. So here, we are including, everything previously in the code was grouped under this group housing temporary shelter. Temporary meant a couple different things in this content. Where it meant there was this temporary stay by a person or the structure themselves were temporary, such as the pallet shelters or tent encampments or tiny homes. So emergency housing is providing that basic housing for basic needs. And in that scenario, they may or may not require a lease. So you try, there's a number of different terms that we're trying to differentiate what those are. Under the state law, the emergency housing really is up to a 60-day stay. So giving somebody 60 days while they try to help them find permanent or a more permanent housing, living arrangement. Then the emergency shelter indoor has to do with places like, I won't give up this early. Has to do with places such as the Gospel Mission. So it may, no lease is required, but they can come in and stay overnight or a period of time. Then the outdoor shelters, which we just talked about, having to do with tents, vehicles or pallet shelters for those experiencing homelessness. So we've added a definition to cover those cold weather shelters, which we call extreme weather shelters. Typically, in this area in Snoamish County, it's when at night the temperature's going to drop below 32 degrees, then someone will open up their doors to allow people to come in and get out of the cold. There's also a situation where you might have a heat wave. I think we had that last summer. So some cooling centers. It also might include those situations where there's smoke from forest fires. And we've had that situation as well. So those are a little bit different because they're very temporary. They're needed like nearly immediately. And so we wanted to treat them different than regular shelters. Transitional housing is that housing where we can get folks into a house for a couple of years and they get supportive services while the goal is for them to get into a permanent situation where they can sustain their living arrangements. Supportive housing, I'll go onto the right side there. That's considered permanent housing. And so the term that's most often used is permanent supportive housing. And so we're just going to, it's the same thing as supportive housing. So we'll just go, we propose to go with the state definition. And we only currently use that definition in our parking minimum. So we've proposed an amendment there. We took a look at the community services and social services facility definitions. And really, they're virtually the same thing. And it made more sense to propose something that would combine them and then put them where they belong, especially if they become accessory use to, say, the supportive housing, the shelters, those kinds of things. They're not schools, they're not hospitals, clinics, daycare or food banks. And they're typically operated by a public agency or a nonprofit. Next slide.
And just as you're following along in the memo and the exhibits, we marked since a lot of this is the same from the last meeting a month ago. We've highlighted where there have been changes from what we presented to you. We're giving a recap for folks, it's been a month.
Yeah.
Out of all of this, this is all the same except we added for the social services definition, specific call-out as an example of services for behavioral health. So you can see that in Appendix A. And just look for the greens and the reds for anything if you were familiar with last month's.
So yes, that's why I'm going through these rather quickly and trying to. So in the use table, again, we basically, we changed that instead of a conditional use, that they would be an administrative use. And then it allows an appeal process to go through the hearing examiner in most cases. Since the last time we were here, we had a provision in 1908-200, which was really the standards for the shelters. We had a provision in there about domestic violence shelters. And so we have actually moved this particular, that particular part of the provision here, which says that those types of shelters are permitted in all zones. We see them sometimes in just a single-family home that gets used. And there you can see, we've shown that we are meeting consistency with state law by allowing the shelters where we allow hotels and motels. We're not changing hotels and motels. We just wanted to demonstrate. That's why you'll see them there. And then here's where you see we've combined the social services and really taken offices and clinics out as separate uses. I think in terms of the land use staff being able to administer this code, it makes a lot of sense because offices can be many different things. And here, we're really defining offices and clinics and social services separately. And then wanting to make a footnote, making sure that we're allowing the opportunity for the social services where we see the emergency shelters, either indoor, outdoor, or even the emergency housing. And I just wanted to reiterate that in the single-family zones, those emergency shelters are only allowed by a religious organization. And that's under state law, that we must allow that. Yep. So in terms of the 1908-200, so that really was talking about the different standards related to the different shelter and emergency housing types. We have the applicability section, some general provisions, standards for those indoor emergency shelters and emergency housing. And then we have added emergency housing to some of the standards that are for the indoor and outdoor emergency shelters. And some of that has to do with the management plan. We want to make sure that if you're doing emergency housing or you're doing emergency shelters, that you have a management plan. And again, this requires the administrative use permit that's approved by the planning director. And then there are provisions for the outdoor emergency shelters. And there weren't a ton of different, there weren't a ton of changes in there. Yeah.
And I just realized today that, so when we changed D to add emergency housing, that's the three types now that are covered by 1908-200. So we're going to have to go between now and the next meeting and combine B and D because B was meant to cover those three. And then C was just indoor shelters and emergency housing. Then D was just indoor shelters and outdoor shelters. But now that it's also emergency housing, then we'll just combine it, B and D, if that makes sense. Which I might walk through this.
Yes. So the regulations currently only apply to outdoor shelters. And so we're expanding their applicability to indoor emergency shelters and emergency housing. It still doesn't apply to those placement of tiny homes when they're put into a mobile home park or manufactured home park. Those are regulated under a different section of the code and/or emergency or disasters that we might have in the community. As I mentioned before, we had moved a part of the domestic violence shelter language that we had in here. But we did still retain the exemption for notice requirements. That's considered a safety provision. We made reference to the religious organizations. And then rather than put specific fire safety considerations in there, we have just referred to the fire and safety because those can change. And so I think one of the reasons they were in there is they're actually in the state law and they were put in there verbatim. And so for indoor emergency shelter and emergency housing, they're just subject to the standards of the zone in which the facility is proposed. So if something's built, would have to, if you're building, say, an emergency housing in a single-family zone, you would be required to build a single-family home. It wouldn't make probably fiscal sense to do that. You wouldn't see that. But nonetheless, this allows us to get consistent with the state law.
And I guess the way these work, too, is that they build on each other. So this is the only one that's applicable to the indoor shelters and emergency housing. But all of the other ones that apply to those apply, too.
And yes, we added a couple things to the management plan, responsibility plan. And one of them is making sure that when they have an approved management plan, that when they change it, that they update the city. The city does use those management plans in terms of if there's any disruption or, you know, if fire or police are called out there, that management plan is used here by city staff. And making sure that we have all of the managing agencies' responsibilities, that they include a transportation plan. And then the code of conduct, rather than specify everything that should be in there, we made it more broad. And that gets decided, it gets proposed by the managing agency. And then we approve the rule, code of conduct through the management plan. And it could be different for each situation. So rather than be prescriptive, we're allowing that to be done on a shelter basis, on each shelter basis. And then we've made sure that there is opportunity for the right situation, that modifications of the standards can be done if a case is made. One change we made here, among other things, this is specific to outdoor shelters. That could be tents, it could be pallet shelters, is making sure that we, there was a lot of information in there, prescription about setbacks, and it really was back again related to the fire code. So we just are again referring to the provisions of the fire code.
I talked with the fire marshal about this today. So this is on page four of Exhibit C in setbacks. We had a requirement that tents, canopies, membrane structures be 20 feet from other tents, canopies and membrane structures. And that was taken right out of the fire code. Although the fire code changes sometimes, it's subject to discretion by the fire marshal. And it had some exceptions that were captured in here. the fire marshal, um, and it had some exceptions that were captured in here. So we thought rather than being specific and prescript, prescriptive, we just refer to the fire code, uh, for the, for the relevant safety considerations.
And that was it. Um, we did, uh, add a new section, nineteen thirteen, one ninety, um, about the temporary extreme weather shelters, so, uh, meaning they would be, uh, they can be active for the duration of the weather condition. It's not for forever. And then there's just some technical corrections, um, since we changed the, combined the community service and the social services facility, we needed to go clean up a couple other sections in the code, and so those are reflected in your Exhibit E. Um, so I know that's a lot, um, and so I, we're happy to take questions, comments.
I have two questions. Uh, the first one, I'm just curious, uh, under, um, the designation, uh, the existing definitions, um, what would Cocoon House Central and, uh, the old Cocoon House Transitional Living, uh, programs be labeled as?
So there was the cocoon shelter.
There was the, yeah, the temporary, uh, two-week stay shelter, and then there was the transitional living shelter of its over, was over at the Kaiser Permanto facility.
Yeah, so the, um, I don't know what the length of stay was over at the, um, at the facility next to.
It was, uh, until you turned eighteen. I was there for a year and a half.
Okay. Um, so they would fall under the indoor emergency shelter for the shelter piece, and the, um, you, you may make a case in Cocoon's case, Cocoon House's case, that they were permanent supportive housing, because I don't think that you can, just because you have an age-out limit, that you couldn't call them permanent supportive housing, um, and/or traditional, I'm sorry, transitional housing. But under the state law, the transitional housing is only two years. So, but I think, um, you, you could make a case for permanent supportive housing for their, their housing, because aging out shouldn't disqualify them that way.
Okay. I was just curious about how that fit into those pre-existing definitions. So my second question, so on, um, uh, Exhibit, uh, or Exhibit D, um, let me get to that page, um, there talks about a minimum of forty-five day, uh, calendar days prior to the anticipated start. The outdoor emergency shelter, it requires a meeting, uh, to, or, yeah. And so does that apply to the, uh, emergency weather shelters? Because I, I didn't see the emergency weather shelters covered anywhere else besides that one mention of them.
Yeah, no, it does not.
Okay. Thank you, uh, thank you for your answers.
Any other questions?
We designed the temporary extreme weather shelters to be as a permitted use within the commercial zones of the city, so that those could be opened on a pretty immediate basis, so they wouldn't need to work with the fire marshal to get, um, life safety considerations met. But other than that, if we knew it was gonna get cold, or hot, or smoky next week, we would be in a position to be able to stand that up immediately. In the residential zones where it's an administrative use permit, there would be a longer timeframe that would include public notice and everything.
But not the public meeting.
But not the public meeting.
Yeah.
And one more follow-up question. Uh, how quickly can those, uh, emergency weather, uh, shelters be stood up, uh, under the current regulations?
I don't, there would not be a restriction on the city end as, as fast as the fire marshal could, um, uh, could get a certificate of, well, not a certificate of occupancy, but a, a permit on that fire code side. So it could be over a weekend. I would recommend a little bit more leave time. We know it will get hot, cold, and smoky at some point, um, but if we're caught by surprise, there would not be anything in the land use code that would slow that down.
I have a procedural question. In the past, I think we've had to vote if we wanted to go past a certain time, and I think we're getting to that time.
It is nine thirty in the bylaws, but I certainly don't, as a matter of course, to keep this, yeah, I checked that, I checked that today.
Thank you. I, it's eight thirty seemed kinda short, but I was, I just remembered.
I checked that today.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions on this item?
Yeah, one question. When you were doing this, did, was there any consideration of having all the emergency, um, housing, uh, as permitted?
Emergency hu, emergency housing specifically?
Yeah, so your emergency shelter, so like the, the, uh, example of Cocoon House, I mean, we're still doing that as, uh, as, as, uh, a lot, or administrative, right?
Yeah.
Why, why isn't it just permitted? Was that conversation thought? I'm just trying to think, it would encourage more groups to come in and try to do this, if they had more security, they'd be allowed to do this. I understand publicly, it would potentially be controversial, but it would just be another step of supporting our groups that are trying to help the situation.
I think, uh, one of the reasons, and, and we worked with Community Development, Julie Willie and her group, who manage, um, the homeless programs in the city, um, but we, um, talked about it and really wanting to make sure that we had that management plan in, in place. If you're gonna have some emergency housing, um, for any length of time, um, just for protection of the shelter group and the protection of the, the community itself, um, the process of getting, them getting an administrative use permit would, would allow that, um, oversight.
So you're saying you couldn't require that in a permitted?
There's, there wouldn't be a mechanism to necessarily require that?
Yeah, I mean, our approach was to start with our existing regulations, look for the required changes from state law, and then do some streamlining and clean up along the way, which included, um, some, what seemed like some good practices for the outdoor shelters and bringing those to the indoor shelters. The, and we, and we did, um, bring it down from a conditional use permit to an administrative use permit and add another zone to it. But our intent wasn't to, to make significant changes to the overall program, that's something that we could do, but we're, excuse me, have to draw a, um, a, a scope, an edge of the scope around somewhere. Um, but as, as Becky said, having some oversight and the ability to set conditions, because in a lot of cases, the city is a partner on these facilities, sometimes, uh, we're not, and it, and sometimes they can have impacts that are disproportionate to the benefit that they provide. Uh, hopefully, that's not the case, but we needed to have the ability to, um, I guess have oversight and regulations there, while generally having the expectation that, um, that, that pursuant to policies in the comprehensive plan and the needs of the city, that we would be, uh, as flexible as we could possibly be with the use. So that was the thinking, that's, uh, the, the, the planning commission and the council are, um, completely empowered to suggest other paths.
Was, uh, the Cocoon House and the Everett Gospel Mission, was this conversation, I mean, I know you've, you've mentioned Julie, I think, last week, or last meeting as well, was, was brought in? Were those groups brought in and discussed? Um, have they seen this specifically other, I know it's a public document?
Um, they're scheduled to get this, this version, because we've, you know, been revising and refining. They're, um, scheduled to get a version of this, well, we're gonna write, widely distribute it, um, this week. And so that'll be time, at least a month, between now and your public hearing, in addition to, it's gotta go through council process as well, but, yes.
Thank you. And for the record, I for one would, would fully support it being permitted.
Thank you, and good reminder on the outreach and, um, uh, to the, to the service providers. I think Julie and Community Development and, uh, Ben Breeden are homeless, uh, services coordinator, I think is his position, kind of represent, they're, they're well familiar with the needs of all of those groups, and have probably had conversations with them too, but we're gonna make sure that we have, uh, a concrete proposal, uh, to those, uh, service providers. And our hope to go from here is to have a public hearing next month, um, and so we'll widely distribute this through the community, and then, uh, if the commission is comfortable after hearing from the public, uh, you may make a recommendation to the council.
Thank you. Are we ready for the last item on the agenda?
So this is another bill that the legislature passed, really in response to the housing, lack of housing, uh, housing issues that our state, actually our nation, is facing in many areas. And that was Senate Bill fifty-two thirty-five. Um, so again, um, we did talk a little bit about it, um, in April, um, we did, we didn't provide any, um, any large analysis or draft code in May, um, so we're providing that draft here tonight, um, but we cannot regulate the number of unrelated persons that may occupy a housing or dwelling unit, householder dwelling unit. So our code, the city's code, directly, um, was contrary to that provision in that we had a definition of family, and, um, we use that definition, and I'll describe that in a moment, but it, it directly regulated a group of not more than four related and unrelated adults and their minor children, but not to exceed, exceed a total of eight related and unrelated persons. So it was, uh, in direct conflict when used with other provisions of the code to limit, um, the number of folks, people living in a dwelling unit. What we're proposing is to eliminate the definition, current definition of family. You can see there are a few other items that are listed there that we used or we had in the definition. Uh, we do not need this definition or those pieces in order for the rest of the code to be, uh, implemented. There, you can see there's a couple of state definitions in there, um, that would, would still apply whether they're not in our code or not. Then, um, taking a look at, we had a definition for dwelling and dwelling units, and it made more sense to combine those two, um, 'cause we're trying to, again, establish what, um, what a dwelling unit means, and it means one or more habitable rooms designed to occupy by one or more persons with that shared facility for living, sleeping, cooking, eating, and sanitation, which meets the minimum requirements under the building code. So we're referring back to the building code in, in terms of, um, if someone were to use a, a dwelling for some other use, um, and then in which his habitable rooms are internally accessible from within the dwelling. So the Everett Housing Code was an old, old, um, document that was used and has been replaced by the, um, building and constructions codes that we've adopted, um, for the last several years, so we cleaned that up.
I think it's worth highlighting that word, shared facilities, that's a new addition that I think is going to, um, pro, protect from segmenting of dwelling units into what is clearly multiple units, which, which there are reasons to avoid and distinguish between that and a dwelling where as many people as can safely live in it are able to live. So that's just one little word that's in there, but I think that's an important one that I wanted to highlight.
And so as we got more into, um, the definitions, uh, and the provisions in the code, rooming house was the primary way that, um, we use the definition of family, so you can see it there, under the definition of family. So it was trying to limit rooming houses, or somebody from renting rooms for more than, having more than eight people in there, as opposed to, um, if you're just having a roommate live with you and, and helping pay, pay rent. Uh, in the past, there had been issues around, um, rooming houses and, and complaints, um, there haven't been any in, in recent years or permitted. Um, a lot of those may have started out as Oxford houses, but we, um, had put in a provision for reasonable accommodations to accommodate those anyway. Um, and so the other thing, eh, that we needed to do was distinguish between the short-term rental and rooming houses. The rooming houses were defined for over thirty days, day, where the short-term rentals, this, short-term rentals, I think, came in under rethink zoning. Um, but those are the Airbnbs, um, that you see people using. Um, we did modify the definition to be more consistent with state law, which says it could be a portion of a dwelling or a, a full dwelling, um, that people would rent out, but this would be less than thirty days. Then taking a look at the bed and breakfast, um, it has much more stringent regulations, and really, the short-term rental definition encompasses what you might think of as a bed and breakfast. And so if, in practicality, if you wanted to have a bed and breakfast, you probably would say you're a short-term rental, because you, you would have many less, you'd have less restrictions and a lot more flexibility, so, um, it was, we felt, um, the short-term rental would encompass the bed and breakfast, and there wasn't a need to continue with that specific use called out. Anything to add on the bed and breakfast?
Nope.
Okay. So if we eliminate bed and breakfast and we eliminate, um, rooming houses, we would take them out of the use matrix. There were two sections, um, of the code then that would go along with that, the boarding houses. Again, that was limiting to two rumors. Um, it, this is where it established that there was no separate, um, kitchen facility, so somebody couldn't chop up a house, um, unless they were actually going to come in for permits and, you know, make a duplex if they could. Um, and then also for the bed and breakfast, and you can see there where the stay is limited to ten days, there's less guests, uh, allowed, five guests per room. You'll see in the short-term rental that, that that's different, that's eight. Um, and so it made sense to eliminate the provisions for that as well. So here's the short-term rental, and you see the change for code consistency, um, and then we did remove the off-street parking, not the provision itself, we just moved it to the right spot, which is in the chap, parking chapter of nineteen thirty-four. And then, um, the number of guests, uh, we removed residents, so we weren't mixing residents and guests, so the guests would occupy dwelling unit. Um, again, we put a limitation there on eight, and, um, and then the parking, which typically might be the concern for the neighborhood, that, that we're accounting for maybe some extra parking.
And sorry if you just said this, but we did the one little change to the parking, since short-term rentals will now capture portions of a dwelling unit, so, uh, if you rent a room, um, it didn't make sense for the parking to be based on just the entire dwelling unit, so that last sentence there, rental of rooms within a dwelling unit, one off-street parking space per guest room, and we lifted that from hotel motel, seemed like a reasonable place to start.
Let's go ahead.
These are our next steps here, public hearing next week, and then, uh, next month, and then it could go to the city council if, if you're ready to make a recommendation next month, and then we also have a couple procedural steps there where where we'll share this with state agencies, Department of Commerce and others for review.
As well as stakeholders.
Yeah, stakeholders, and we'll bring it to our attorneys for their review as well.
Looks like we have one question.
I do have a question about the, a couple about the short-term rentals. Other than because I see that the state law exempts short-term rentals from the limitation number of guests, why eight? Where does that come from? Is it just because we can, and it's just a relic that we don't want to change, we're holding on to the past? Or is there some reason that we place some limit and we get to eight? I guess, because it just, in some ways, doesn't seem to me, if we can't limit the number of people that live in a, say, a house, why if that house, entire house, is being used? Say they could have 12 people, 15 people living there, but if they're using it as a short-term rental, it's eight. It just, I just, it seems somewhat arbitrary, and I'm just curious if there was some thought about where we came to that.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit of both. I think it was probably based on the limit of eight unrelated adults in a dwelling unit. That's my total guess as to how that got placed as a limit for the short-term rentals. I think practically, it makes sense. It's a different kind of policy need to provide sufficient places for people to live versus to provide sufficiently large rental, not rental, but essentially hotel stand-ins. The impacts from a wedding party next door with 50 people in a large house next door to someone would probably be a lot more significant than the impacts of having a house with a lot of people living there. So that would be a reason to keep a limit on the number of people there. But my guess is that it comes from the maximum number dwelling unit, which my research shows came from 1952 Minneapolis-St. Paul zoning ordinance, along with the rooming house and the bed and breakfasts. All of those definitions are, appear to be lifted straight from there into an American Planning Association publication that then spread widely throughout the country as a way to limit the negative effects of rooming houses and boarding houses.
And I guess somewhat related to that, when you're looking at the parking requirements in Exhibit D, for, so a single dwelling house, it sounds, looks like they have, they have to have two off-street parking, but if that same house is just being rented by, on a less than a month basis, they have to have three? I guess that just seems somewhat arbitrary to me and somewhat eternally inconsistent.
I tried to find the ordinance that, I think it was just before Rethink Housing. I ran out of time before I could find the materials associated with that. Hopefully, that would shed some light on why that number. But until I'm able to track that down, the guess would be that, starting with a conservative parking approach, as short-term rentals were a relatively new use in the late 2010s or something.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess in some ways, it almost seems like there's some effort to maybe discourage that as a use, which, I mean, I can understand there's a difference between, you know, maybe people needing to have housing, and it does seem a little more of a niche use, but it just, like I said, it seems a little bit maybe inconsistent to me. And I do just want to indicate, I know that the memo indicates that staff looked at other uses of the word "family," but looking at Exhibit D, there's parking requirements, for example, daycare, family home, adult family homes, so that word is still used. And then even going down further, you know, dwelling, single family. I mean, I guess people do kind of understand what that means, but I suppose, it would seem to me that for sake of consistency, it might be helpful for the city or for staff to maybe look at some sort of different terminology to use. If we're eliminating family in other contexts, maybe just get rid of it altogether, because it still has that connotation, I think, and kind of is maybe anachronistic and outdated. So if we're moving away from that, maybe do it wholesale would be something I would suggest.
We've got it in our comp plan, you know, single-family zoning, and so it will take.
It is pervasive. I understand it's going to take some time, but I think that maybe making an intentional effort to move away from that, you know, across the code, I think would make sense to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, we made sure, we went through every single place that the word "family" exists and made sure that its applicability didn't rely on the definition, so that by deleting the definition, I think you would revert to the dictionary definition generally for all of the other words that don't have definitions. Things like adult family home, I've never quite understood where the family comes into that, but that's all over state law and everything, and it's not going to be something that we can change. I suppose the single family and multi-family.
I did talk to another jurisdiction that was actually doing that, eliminating that word "family," like single unit zoning, or, you know, something like that.
And I think I have heard of it being done almost in an equity consideration as well. There's some historical issues with that. So just to get, just to comment, I thought, because it would be worth looking at more broadly even than, maybe even if it's not required.
Yeah, we were focusing on the definition of dwelling unit, because that's what gets applied in a code enforcement case or has in the past if too many people were living in a dwelling unit. We'll have to think about those other uses of the word "family."
Any other, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. With regard to the meaning of dwelling, I did notice that shared facilities, that shared was inserted. And I recall we had that conversation last time about potential rental abuses. So I think that was very smart to do that. So I had questions about the short-term rental parking. It made sense to me where it said one parking space per guest room. But if you have a two-bedroom, one-bath house that's being used as an Airbnb, why would that have three or four spaces required? I guess that's one question. And then the other would be, what if you live in your home, but you rent out your rooms like an Airbnb, like you have a four-bedroom house, you live in one, and then you rent out the rooms? Would that be one space per guest room plus the required space for the principal dwelling? Or is that, is it separate? I guess it was just a bit of clarification on the parking that I was looking for.
Great. I'll go backwards on that. If it is not immediately clear, we should make sure that it is immediately clear. And so I had intended that to be separately. So if you're renting the entire dwelling unit, then we're just keeping the parking requirement that was there in the past, just again, starting with this principle of making the changes that are required plus streamlining, but not necessarily opening up what is the appropriate amount of parking required for a short-term rental use as part of the scope. That said, it didn't make a ton of sense to me either, whenever you have a parking requirement that ignores the size of the unit or the use. I think, well, I have stayed in a short-term rental in another city that was an apartment. And if it's a one-bedroom apartment, you probably couldn't prove that you have three spaces. So are we de facto prohibiting short-term rentals in apartment buildings, whether we wanted to or not? The danger of scope, but that is something that we could consider amending between now and next month. Is that something that strikes the majority of the commission as? You can see the tension here between this started as, this started as removing the limitation on the number of people who can live in a dwelling unit, and then now it's drifting into parking requirements for short-term rentals, which then why not check out parking requirements for hotels and dot, 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 dot? That said, we're just taking a little nibble at the edge here.
Well, and if I could just add on that, likewise, a similar situation. You've got a two-bedroom house. If you're renting the rooms out for more than 30 days, the parking issues and impacts in the community are probably actually, in some ways, longer term and worse. You're only required to have two parking spots, whereas if you do it for 10 days, you have to have a third. Again, that's kind of what I was getting, it just doesn't seem really, I guess, how to explain or how to justify that different treatment, I guess.
The Rethink Housing Action Plan included recommendations about looking at reducing parking minimums. Is there any progress on that?
That's going to be part of the comprehensive plan update. And I think there's, it's going to be very difficult for us to avoid that conversation. I'm not, I'm not very excited to have that conversation. It's a very contentious issue. It is, we were talking about barriers before, and is probably one of the number-one ways that, reasons that we have to say no to what would seem to be an otherwise positive value-added, affordable housing development. In some ways, planning has evolved in the past to become all about parking. There's whole uses in here. The supportive housing you saw exists only to ensure that there's sufficient parking there. I don't, I think there's almost no way that we get to our housing target in those 10,000 units and all of that without looking at parking. But we need to do it holistically within the context of that comp plan update. We'll probably have whole meetings dedicated to parking, although a lot of that was recently done with rethink zoning. So we're starting from a place where they, the parking minimums, I think, of max minimums have already been reduced fairly recently. So the progress is going to be part of the comprehensive plan update, and it is going to be fun. And in the meantime, maybe what we can offer is that we'll try to track down either through the oral history of our longstanding staff, where this short-term rental parking minimum came from. Maybe it's in the written staff reports that accompany the ordinance or something, and take a look and see if there's something that can be a little bit more appropriate for that use.
Anyone else?
I'm afraid of mentioning this in case it takes us down a rabbit hole, but I just wanted to, under the short-term rentals section, it talks about requiring a license. Am I reading that right to assume that that requires, like, if you're going to host an Airbnb, that you would need a license from the city to do that?
Business license, yes.
Okay. And I guess the follow-up question is, what's enforcement of that look like?
Enforcement is the pickle with these, so I would think that it's complaint-based, so we're not going out and checking these. I did a lot of work on short-term rentals when I worked for the county. It was in response to some significant concerns coming from some folks who lived next door to someone who was renting out a large house, six out of seven days a week, all summer long, to new rounds of guests who would come fresh and ready to enjoy their couple of days, and then they'd leave worn out, and then the next round of guests would come, and these poor neighbors were never able to get any sleep and everything. Anyways, with that research, enforcement is a real pickle with that. A lot of the examples that I've seen that do successful enforcement have a whole program. They have staff dedicated to it, or they hire consultants to go check all of the different platforms and make sure that you have a business license and all that. In our case, my assumption is that this would be complaint-based. So if somebody is having trouble, then they would contact code enforcement, and we would look and make sure that all of these requirements were being met. And if they are, then that would be the end of the story. And if they're not, then we would enforce on it.
I guess I would just say maybe one other reason, maybe not make short-term rental parking more onerous is because in some ways, it, I think, could discourage people from going through the proper license procedure and kind of push some of these things underground where you kind of don't want them either. You'd rather have them with a business license, maybe generating some revenue. Something else maybe think about is.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that, and we'll likely bring you a slightly revised proposal in that regard a month from now.
And you had your next steps screen up.
A screen that is not a touchscreen.
Okay.
There we go. So our next steps would be, if the commission is feeling like we're pretty close to a product that you could take a vote on next month, we'll schedule a public hearing. We'll get these proposals out. As you've watched this evolve in real time over the past couple of months, and I think staff is feeling a little bit more comfortable with the product that we have now after several rounds of great questions and feedback from you and internal review and everything. So we'll do those steps that you see on the bottom there over the next month and come back for what could be a brief public hearing. If there's not many more points of discussion or clarification or questions, we can make this a pretty brief agenda item next month, hear from the public, and depending on what is raised by the public, we may be ready to take a vote on that and keep on with the next items.
So I think we're ready to adjourn.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.